Meeting's order, please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the final.
United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God. Individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes from the November thirteenth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First electors comments, I'll defer to later. And the fourth citizens' comments.
Professor Vassar, thirty-four. A couple of weeks ago, I sent you a memo about the Resiliency Plan in Madison. And yesterday, during the weekend, I put together a shorter version of this additional stuff in an email to you today, and I don't know whether you had a chance to look at it. But one of the things I wanted to mention is that the flood and erosion control board has not been active for many, many years. Of the five members, there's only one active member on it. And I'm offering an email I sent to you guys today to enter my name in the operation to serve on that board for the short term. I'm putting it to the board because I'm an affiliate owner, so I don't have the opportunity to be either of the two committees. And I don't want the Democrats and Republicans fighting over each other.
The arm pole.
The other thing is, today was very appropriate. We had East Wind, we had High Tides, we had Water Over Surplus, especially we had Little Beach Road East and just the Brooklyn Bridge. And just as an example, I have copies of the state statutes that enable local towns to have flood and erosion control boards.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. And then enabling legislation gives those boards tremendous power. They can issue bonds, they can book those, they can, can't think of the word, eminent domain property under certain circumstances, not in general, whatever. But also, what I envision in town is, this is a picture of Circle Beach Road, and this is about a half an hour before High Tide. Okay? And the first thing that you might think about, just as an example of what this board would do if they were empowered, you might say, well, we can raise the road. If you take a look at the left-hand side, you see that the property there is raised where the car is parked. Actually, the septic system is. If you raise the road, and the tides get higher and higher with sea level rise, and the septic systems get inundated, what did the town do? They put in a pumping station for the houses along there, buy shorefront property up on top of the hills, to put in a wastewater treatment plant for these homes. These are the type of decisions that are going to have to be made in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. So I would suggest that we start looking at these things by getting this board together. I think the town ordinance needs some work, because it puts one hundred percent of the responsibility for implementation on the engineering department, which I don't think is appropriate. And, you know, so I would think the first thing the board can do, if it's an activator, is to take a close look at the ordinance because I think it has to be known. So, you know, just the type of thing, that is a twenty, thirty, thirty-year project, and it's difficult for some of us that are sitting here today to think about that far out.
You mean to say for forty years?
I don't, because I'm a futurist. I'm an old man, but I'm a futurist and always have been a futurist. To me, the only value of the past is to realize mistakes I've made. So I would, you know, act that you, for the benefit of the town, for the future, don't pick it down the road like many, many governmental bodies do in this day and age, that gets the ball rolling. And you might think about putting a line item in the budget for flood and erosion control board, for some planning money. It's a twenty-five, thirty, forty, whatever you think is appropriate, but get a line item in the budget.
Thank you, Gus.
Thanks, Gus.
Hi, Gus. Good evening, Catherine Hunter. I am going to speak on behalf of the Academy Guidance Committee. Henry Greig's couldn't be here this evening. We wanted to just do two things. Get the word out that the Academy polling started today. I have it from one very good source that he received a call, so it's, it's started. This is Great Blue. If you see this ID on your phone, or you see a series of numbers, eight-six-oh-seven-four-zero-four-thousand, please pick up the phone and participate. The accompanying online survey starts December third. For those who might have said, oh, we saw things that said they both started at the same time, our apologies. We were told by Great Blue that they would like to be ninety percent of the way through the phone polling before they go live with the online survey, because they don't want to deplete the pool for the phone calling. So please, pick up the phone, go online, starting next week, let your voice be heard. We want to also thank everyone who attended the AGC Public Information Sessions. They were well attended, especially the one in the afternoon at the Senior Center. We, we have source materials, including the PowerPoint presentation from both of those sessions, on the town website. We've also posted on the town website the matrix, the developer proposals, the community options, and there's a link for old stuff if you want to explore the history. So we're encouraging everyone who didn't attend those sessions to please go online and look at these source materials. I also want to plug Save Academy, the grassroots group that I'm part of. We are publishing on our website and on other Madison websites just a, a simple flyer telling everybody what to look out for. We are not endorsing a single option, we're just encouraging everyone to pick up the phone and to go online. Thanks.
Just pass over. Anybody else, the other citizens' comments? Okay, hearing none. New business number five, discuss and take action to avoid the RFP for engineering services for the replacement of the Heatherwood Drive Bridge number oh-four-eight-five-seven under the federal local bridge program to Malone and McBroom.
Second.
Rob, say anything about that?
Just real quick, I'm sure you're all aware that the bridge replacement was accepted into the federal program. And following their procedures and guidelines, we received, we put out an RFQ that was properly advertised in New Haven Register, Connecticut DNS website, and the town's website. We received about ten or twelve submittals, and based on the company's expertise, firm's profile, and experience under the federal local bridge program, we shortlisted it to five engineering firms. Of those five, we had a all-day interview session with all five firms, a committee of five, myself, Johnny and Ako, Tom Bandish and Al Goldberg, and then a representative from CT DOT, Mark Burns. All five of us scored the firms independently, and Malone and McBroom had the highest score. So I submitted the reading forms, the summary to DOT, and they approved Malone and McBroom's selection. So we could get the process.
Are they the same ones that are doing county?
No, Nate and Jacobson's doing county.
Yes.
Malone and McBroom is actually doing the redesign, the rehabilitation of the Texas Walkway.
Okay.
But it's just, by chance that they scored out the highest.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rob.
Sure.
Case we have motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question about the, the bridge.
Sure.
I was just wondering if these bridges are, if this company is taking into consideration either by, either bicycle or pedestrian lanes when they...
Yes, Seth Millen brought up during the conversation we had with them, that they would take into account the fact that there might be paths or roads or, you know, lanes that might be appropriate.
I remember the same thing when we did the county. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was totally out of order.
Great deference, though.
Number six, update from Water Pollution Control Authority. And Tom left us a summary sheet.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just a quick outline of what I'm going to talk about, and you can follow along on that. Extra copies on that. If you want to pass it around, there's maybe a dozen of them there, but you can share it with you. But my name is Tom Hanson, I'm chairman of the Water Pollution Control Authority. And just want to update you on the status of the water pollution control plan and some of the other issues that we're looking at. This is kind of an informal report. The board, the authority does consist of five members, myself, we have Tom Lonsdale, who happens to be a science teacher up in Hartford, Peter Pest Authority is an engineer, Graham Curtis is CEO of DTC, an engineering firm, and Mark Allen, who is resident of the town. The town of Madison's responsible for all the wastewater generated within its boundaries, as is every other community in the state. By state statute, the town is required to have a water pollution control plan. And the plan is really to address wastewater disposal issues in the town of Madison. And there are really three types of systems that the plan is required to address by state law. Municipal facilities, which would be town-owned sewers, treatment plants, things like that, of which Madison has none. None existing and none planned, and that's spelled out in our plan, we all have it. Individual septic systems, this is by far and away, of course, the major wastewater disposal system in place in the town of Madison. So the plan does go into some detail about how those systems ought to be managed and operated. And something called a community systems. Now, a community system is any wastewater treatment system that serves two or more residences. And they can be either publicly owned or privately owned. We have no publicly owned community systems, but there are a number of privately owned community systems in the town of Madison. I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a minute, what that means. The plan also has the towns designate decentralized wastewater management districts, which would be areas of concern or areas in the town where we would impose additional restrictions or different restrictions. It's interesting that Gus brought up the Resiliency Plan, because the Resiliency Plan addresses, I think, maybe eleven or twelve different beach areas that would kind of broadly meet that definition of environmentally sensitive areas. But we have, the WPCA has developed guidelines for wastewater management districts, but they have not been adopted or even put forth as an ordinance or anything like that. But they can be found on our website, and it's just important to know that the WPCA has thought about that and considered it. The plan also describes programs that are designed to avoid community pollution problems. And a community pollution problem is exactly as it's defined in the state statutes. That's why it's in quotations there, and that's why the plan has to address it. So, in, in our plan, which you all have received a copy of it, and I've also sent it to other boards and commissions, it talks about these four major points. Individual septic system design guidelines, and we follow, basically, the Department of Public Health guidelines, and in terms of the size of systems, the components of systems, the design features. And we specifically prohibit in accordance with the BEP cesspools and other non-conforming systems. We require a pump-out schedule, it's a five-year cycle. We send out notices to homeowners periodically reminding them of that fact. And the pump-out contractors in town do report back when they pump systems. There's a winterization program that requires that the septic system be part of that winterization permitting or procedure or application by the homeowner. Has to meet certain requirements for the septic system, or be able to put in a new septic system to achieve winterization. And we also have to put forth guidelines for operating these community systems. The community systems would be systems such as, there's a, there's a community septic system up at Legend Hill, Oxford Falls, Buck Hill, The Muse is a treatment plant. So they, these are community systems because they have two or more residences connected to them. As opposed to a non-community system like Stop and Shop, or the high school, or Tuxus, the heart that Tuxus, those are not community systems. So the town is not, we, we know about them, we observe, and they're permitted by the DEEP, but we don't take an active role in seeing that they're managed correctly. For the community systems, we do, because if a community system goes into failure mode, and either the condo association or the homeowners or whatever fail to maintain and upgrade that system, the town must by statute take over that system. So we do have procedures in place for that. We require them to be regularly inspected, a report to give into the health director, and in fact, we require those community system owners to set aside funding for operation, maintenance, and repair of the systems in an account that we oversee, and we can monitor how that money is being used. They take five thousand dollars out to fix a pump, that's fine, but they have to replenish that five thousand dollars at some point. So we work together with the community system owners.
Tom, how often do we take over somebody's system?
We have never had to. We've never had to. As far as I'm aware, we haven't. Now, there are some systems that have gone in before that statute was enacted, and before the DEEP had guidelines for it. I'm not sure if I have a list of what they are, but there are a few of those systems in act. And under looking forward, that's one of the things we're going to be trying to get our heads around, make sure that those are properly managed as well. And finally, the plan is administered by the health director. Trent Joseph is our health director. He basically takes care of this whole program, and he's just terrific at this. He and his staff and his assistants know the health code in and out, they understand the issues in Madison, and they work very closely with the installers and the pump-out contractors to do the best job possible under the, sometimes difficult conditions with properties in Madison. So what did we update in the plan? We updated the plan in September, and, so it is September, yeah. So we made a few changes to the plan, just going to touch on a couple of them very quickly. We changed the designation of what a DEEP system is. It used to be five thousand gallons per day and over, it's now seven thousand five hundred gallons per day and over. Everything under that is handled by, under the Department of Health guidelines, and Trent Joseph can review, approve, and, and take care of those plants. Anything over seventy-five hundred goes to the DEEP by statute. We, we had a discussion, and we changed the downtown water restriction district. This was an area roughly defined as Main Street in downtown. In years past, we recognized that the septic systems were old, undersized for the size of the building and what was going on in there. And, and because the properties change use occasionally, you know, someone moves out, a new tenant moves in, et cetera, we had been using a, sort of a prescriptive code saying that those properties were listed to one gallon per day per square foot of floor space. In discussions with Trent, and with changes in the industry and things like that, it's now really up to the health director's discretion. He will look very closely at the septic system. When a new tenant is coming in, and say you're going from a nail salon to a restaurant, clearly Trent will be tasked with looking at that septic system to see if it's appropriate, the new use is appropriate. So we've dropped the issue of the one gallon per day per square foot, which was a difficult one to manage. Now it's an even more difficult one, but, but it's more of a professional opinion at, at the level of the local health department. If he feels he needs assistance, he can go to the State Department of Public Health or even the DEEP on that. Sometimes these businesses might require some investigation and research as to how much water they use, et cetera, et cetera. But that's well managed by Trent at the time. We added some references in the water pollution control plan to the two thousand and thirteen Plan of Conservation and Development. Now, the Plan of Conservation and Development, when it was adopted in two thousand and thirteen, did have some goals and objectives for wastewater management in the town. One was to update the facilities plan, another was to do the wastewater management district approach, to which I said we've kind of, part of the way, we've, we've put together some draft guidelines for that. So that reference has been incorporated into the plan. And as I say, we've made reference in the plan to the wastewater management district guidelines that we put together. Some other clarifications and wording changes throughout the plan that just clear up a few things. The plan does go into some history about the old facilities plan designation one, two, and three areas, which are no longer applicable, but we kept a little bit of that stuff in there to sort of explain where the plan is going now. So looking ahead, what's the WPCA's, what's on our agenda now going forward for the next year? Well, for one thing, we are on the list for obtaining DEEP funding if we want to update our planning studies. That program is through the Clean Water Act and provides fifty-five percent grant funding for planning studies. And we are on the priority list, the money is a set aside, so it's available for us. Establishing the wastewater management districts, we'd like to take that up in a discussion with some of the other boards in town to talk about what that means and how it would affect development and environmental impacts, et cetera, in the town. Wastewater management districts would allow us to designate, say, a certain area, a marsh area, close proximity to water, densely developed areas, you mentioned the flooding and the septic. You know, is there an opportunity to put some guidelines together for those kinds of areas which will enhance the use of septic systems in a environmentally acceptable manner and avoid the problems associated with flooding? We can't really do that without, I think, the foundation of, of an evaluation conducted by a consulting firm or somebody who can really establish the pros, the cons, the costs, the impacts, the implementability, et cetera. We do have areas of environmental concern, you know, there's camps in town, there's water proximity lots with small systems, there's densely developed areas in areas of high groundwater, it can't be my writing, I guess, marshes, shoreline. And we do have still, even in densely developed areas, we do have some areas with private wells, drinking water wells. And the more we develop, and I'm thinking particularly of Wall Street and, and Main Street, the more those areas develop, the more septic systems will be put on, and they might be larger septic systems for restaurants, et cetera, the more the WPCA is concerned about properties nearby that have private wells. Because whether those wells become contaminated or not, they may in fact become an issue for the town. It may be the town's responsibility at some point in the future to address water quality issues with regard to the private wells. And that is because we are responsible for the wastewater disposal practices in the town. So we have to keep an eye towards that. Nitrogen in the groundwater has been an issue now for quite some time. Septic systems will work very well, but they don't remove nitrogen. And nitrogen is now a pollutant of concern, not just for the groundwater, but for Long Island Sound and marshes, et cetera. And there's been a number of studies, including the most recent one from UConn, which tries to quantify the nitrogen loading to the marshes and to Long Island Sound between septic systems and fertilizers and other sources. And of course, it's not just Connecticut, it would also be New York State. And New York State has gone to a one hundred percent nitrogen removal model in their septic systems. So it's just an interesting progression of how these things are moving along. I mentioned the impact on the salt marshes and Long Island Sound. With regard to the salt marshes, there's beginning to be a lot of indication that nitrogen in the vicinity of the salt marshes allows the salt grass to grow without developing the strong root network that's responsible for holding the marsh together, so to speak. So it requires, I mean, there's been some studies on that, and it's interesting to see that. Use of passive, passive nitrogen reduction systems, and I have to compliment again Trent Joseph on this, a passive nitrogen reduction system would be a septic system that has as a component some layer underneath it, maybe it's a, a carbon layer, or some manufactured product that actually nitrifies the nitrogen and denitrifies the nitrogen, it's a chemical process, actually a biological process. And although it's not a requirement for our, for septic systems in town, Trent has had some success in getting some of the larger septic systems to incorporate these features, which is terrific, and we'd really like to speak, see that program develop more fully. And that's ongoing. And Gus, of course, he mentioned sea level rise, which is, is going to have to be part of our study. If we look at septic systems, where are we going to be in five years, ten years, twenty years? There's been enough studies of the shoreline already to tell us where those sea levels are going to be. And that's going to be an issue for us at some point with regard to septic systems. And so I've given, everyone, everyone's received a copy of the updated plan. Those are the changes to it, those are some of the things we're looking forward to addressing in the next year. And if you have any questions, you know where to reach us, or I can answer some questions right now, if you'd like.
Tom, that's very hopeful. Are there any initiatives you need from the selectmen at this time? Is there any cooperation you need from the selectmen at this time? Are there any resources you need from us at this time?
Well, as you know, the WPCA has a budget of zero dollars. And it, I, I think what we would, we would be seeking from the selectmen is support for moving forward with any planning studies that we mutually agree are reasonable and well-intentioned. And we've got, the WPCA has some ideas, we, we kind of know what a responsible facilities plan would look like. The last one we did was in the sixteen, in the eighties, was nineteen eighty-one. And it's clearly outdated, and it doesn't really give us a roadmap to the future, so to speak. So that kind of a study would be good to do. It would be a specific study for Madison. We would pull information from other studies, the UConn study, any studies that the state has done at sea level rise. Well, we already know all the technical issues really associated with nitrogen and with septic systems. But our study would say, what's the best way to proceed, knowing all this information? What's the best way for Madison to proceed that utilizes technology and management programs to effectively renovate wastewater in the town so it doesn't contaminate groundwater and, and Long Island Sound? So that kind of a study, I think, is one that we would like to see moved forward by the selectmen. I mean, our advice is to, our job is to, to advise and recommend, and that's a recommendation that we would make.
In, in the past, you've talked an order of magnitude of about a hundred thousand dollars. That study, does that sound right?
Yeah, and it's, the price, the cost of a study would be the cost to have a consultant to a specific scope of service. a specific scope of services that we give. If the scope of services is narrow, saying what should we do about, you know, let's face it, Madison's always going to be an onsite disposal system. Structural solutions, sewers and community systems and treatment would be very marginally used, I think, in Madison in the long term. So if we focus our study on, on that particular aspect of wastewater disposal in town, it could be on the order of $100,000. And I think I might have said $150,000.
But, but then...
Is it going up all the time?
But that's before the contribution from the deep funds, right?
That's right. That would be...
So that's the total? And then you're looking 55% would come from the deep funds.
And if we, if we define the scope broader to a more traditional municipal facilities approach, where we would look at the downtown area, for example, and really look hard at putting in sewers and treatment units and things like that, the cost of that study would be, would be greater because the alternative is being looked at. You know, we would get more into, you'd have to find locations for sites. You might have to do some testing of sites. You have to do some mapping work, et cetera, et cetera. So we could define the scope that we'd like to see and then look at what it would cost to do scopes of different sizes, you know, basically, and settle on what we want. I think the WPCA's concerns now are really the the long-term onsite septic system issues, let's say, south of Route 1. Okay? It's just a very broad description. And then there's a few things that are troublesome in terms of very densely developed areas. Gus even mentioned, you know, what do we do with these areas? We pump them up to a community system? And it's very possible you could do that. But again, all this would kind of come out as a plan, a long-term plan for the town of Madison in regards to wastewater disposal.
Would it make sense for us to do that in tandem with the update to the Plan of Conservation and Development? Does one inform the other?
Yes, but usually the Plan of Conservation and Development has representatives of the WPCA as part of the working group. So the coordination will be there, whether it's done at the same time or not, in my opinion.
When is the next round of that? Well, we've got money in the cycle coming up, right?
Yeah, we have money coming up in the CIP, but it needs to be completed, you know, say, five years from now. I do believe, I think Tom mentioned, there was a recommendation in the POCD to do what Tom was saying. So I don't know that it needs to wait for the POCD update necessarily. If you guys feel that it should be moved forward, I think it can move forward in advance of that update.
The POCD is, yeah.
POCD is a bit broader in scope, obviously, than, than this would be. This would be much more specific and technical.
And certainly, this needs to be done in concert with our strategic plan as well. I mean, this should be, we're talking about a 10-year strategic plan and all this sort of lines up.
I'm not sure how they would relate to each other. Would the, the strategic plan would inform the recommendations from, from your group, I would imagine, rather than the other way around, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the scope of the strategic plan is. But if I understand it correctly, and you correct me if I'm wrong, the strategic plan would look at, part of the task is to talk to the different boards and commissions and obtain input from them on strategic plan. Incorporate it into one. I really don't see the wastewater facilities plan issue as, as needing to occur before or after a strategic plan. I, I think it's kind of a stand, they're usually a stand-on their own kind of a program. And I think right now, the strategic plan would probably simply say, do some planning for long-term wastewater disposal without getting into the weeds about exactly what should be done. And that's really what the wastewater facilities plan is. Really what specifically, what program should be adopted from the wastewater disposal system.
But I think to your, maybe your bigger point is that wastewater management is an important stakeholder in the planning.
Integrated as a whole process. Are there any sort of building on what Al was saying, though? Is there any burning platform decisions that need to be made in the next couple of years that you guys foresee?
The only thing I might come forward is the proposal for establishing wastewater management districts. But that would probably have to take the form of an ordinance, which would have to go through selectmen. However, we really are not comfortable putting forward an official program until we've conducted a study to say, where should these districts be? What management technique should be applied? And how do we pay for it? So what we need from the selectmen is a support for, for a plan, a wastewater facilities plan of some form or another that would guide us in the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years on wastewater management in the town to avoid the community pollution problems, which are very likely to occur, if they haven't already occurred, due to inadequate wastewater renovation in troublesome areas and along the shoreline. There's, there's a lot of work been done by the state for Long Island Sound. And although we appreciate these plans and studies that have been done and we've been able to review, they're not specific enough for us to go and say, we need nitrogen removal systems in the whole town or south of Route 1, let's say. Okay, we, we don't feel that they, you know, what does that mean for Madison? It says, this is what it means for Long Island Sound in general over the next 20 years. And, but it doesn't say that it's the right thing for Madison to do. So the plan would take those findings, conclusions, or recommendations and kind of adopt them, apply them to Madison, and the plan would be our plan. So that's really what we want to do. We want to do the updated facilities plan at some point that will give us that guidance.
Tom, we're about to enter our budget, annual budget cycle again. Are you proposing any changes to your current level of funding?
We'd like to double it. Well, we don't, we don't have a lot of expenses. I mean, the Department of Public Health, you know, Trent's department does all the heavy lifting. They incur all the expenses. So the quick answer is no. I mean, we have some, like, I go to the community or the Connecticut Association of WPCAs, you know, twice a year to a workshop. You know, it costs me 60 bucks or something, isn't it? Yes, we do have our own association. It's the Connecticut Association of WPCAs. You know, you wear funny hats.
Nice, nice, perfect.
Which is a great educational experience for the members of the WPCA. Other than that, we don't really incur any expenses right now. The, the problem is, we, we don't have the ability to hire anybody to do a study. That, that of course, would have to come through the selectmen.
Thanks, Tom.
No, not good. Thank you.
You don't have to turn that off because the next people are going to use it. Thank you. Number seven, update from that hot bicycle pedestrian advisory plan.
I think we're going to go from water pollution to air pollution. Or the role of it. Because if everybody would get out there and walk and bike, we wouldn't have air pollution problems. We're approaching our first anniversary. And so we thought it was appropriate to bring you all up to date on what we've done so far. You know about the Complete Streets because you passed it, the Complete Streets policy, which is great. And I, we're looking forward to the next few years and having that implemented. It's great to hear that, that it's already been taken into consideration with a couple of projects. We've done a huge amount of outreach trying to get the public to complete the survey, which essentially asks them what they would like in better biking and better walking in Madison. We've gotten some really good results. And Lian is going to tell you about that in a few minutes. We, we went through Facebook. We've gone through the town email system. We went to the press. And we've been out on the street, literally, collaring people to get them to fill out the survey. So it's been, we've had some pretty good success. One of our young members, we have two, two students from the high school who are sort of liaison members of the committee. They're not technically, in your terms, members of the committee, but we consider them members of the committee. And they're, they're two great kids. And one of them did a bike safety rodeo this past spring as his Eagle Scout project. And that was very successful. And we had a scarecrow downtown thanks, almost about 99%, thanks to Ellen Weiss. We had a terrific scarecrow down in the Chamber of Commerce scarecrow contest. We had actually two scarecrows, a biker and a walker. What we have in process right now is the second student from Hen is, is one of his, a project from one of his classes is doing a survey of students. Because the one thing we found in the, in the, in our own surveys is that we weren't getting input from the young people in town. So he decided to sort of revise our survey. And he, he's got that in process right now. We're hoping next week, at our next meeting, we'll go here, what his results have been. We have John Bean, who's a magician with maps, is doing some mapping for us. So, which will become part of the final master plan that we're charged with developing. Probably the most vital part of the master plan. He's done a fantastic job with the maps and with dividing the town into workable chunks of, of the town to, to survey what's, what's good and what's bad. And he's done a lot of research in other towns, what, what they do about controlling biking and walking. We wanted to do some serious safety education. The rodeo was a good start. We, we need to develop some more plans. We want to go, we want it to be through schools and for adults because what we heard in the survey was nobody knows how to walk, drive, or ride a bike in town. So we need to, we need to work on, on that for everybody. We want to do an application to the League of American Bicycleists to become a bicycle-friendly community. There's eight bicycle-friendly communities in Connecticut. And we'd like Madison to be the ninth. We think it's a prestigious thing for the town, but also would have an effect on tourism, economic development. I mean, it's just a good thing to do. And so we're going to be pursuing that. What else are we doing? Am I forgetting anything? I, I think that's about what we're doing so far. We'll come back to you in a, maybe in January, about, to show you what we're doing with the mapping. It's, it's all by itself. It's going to be a fascinating problem for you to see. And, and we have to do it when John's here because John's the magician. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lian Hurdle, who's going to tell you what we found in the survey.
Well, I'll just pass this out first. We started this right after you adopted the Complete Streets policy. And did, started our outreach. These are the results of the survey for five months, May 29th. You also have the brochure, our shared card that we use, which is now out of date because we have a new member. But the, the survey is 10 short questions with two opportunities for comments. And I'll go through it really quickly. If you have any questions, just stop me. The first question, we had 585 responses in the five months. The first question, how do you use the trails and roads in Madison? We have more bikers, more walkers than bikers, 88% versus 71%. But those are both high numbers. If you walk or bike, how would you describe your activity? Exercise and recreation are the top reasons. Those are both high numbers again. But you'll notice that over 1 in 4 people bike or walk to do shopping or errands. And 1 in 5 bike or walk for transportation or commuting. So these first two give you an indication of the high level of use of our roads currently for biking and walking. If you flip over question three, would you like to see safer infrastructure? This is overwhelmingly yes, at 97%. There were 14 people who said no. So looking ahead at the comments to try and get an idea of why. Seven said there was some need for change. And only two mentioned cost. One said, I hope you'll do a cost-benefit analysis. But it's a good heads up to have an idea of what concerns are and to keep that in mind going forward. Question four, what accommodations for walking and biking do you wish were available? The number one request was separated, well-defined bike lanes, which is interesting at 75%. That is more than the number of bikers, which were 71%. And that probably shows that, I mean, bike lanes help bikers, walkers, and drivers. And there may be people who would like to bike if it were safer. The next highest choice was wider road shoulders at 60%. That also benefits bikers, walkers, and drivers. Sidewalks were next at 55%, which were preferred over the separated, well-defined pedestrian lanes. And if you just go down to more bicycle parking, that's 1 in 5 people. And that's probably the simplest, least expensive improvement that could be easily made and would satisfy a lot of people. Likewise, more crosswalks, that's also one of the lesser expensive and easier things to do. And that's more than 1 in 4 people would like to see that. And John Bean, Jenny mentioned, he found in his inventory of our streets that we are unusual in the shoreline in not having crosswalks, especially down on the shoreline. So question five, where would you like to see improved accessibility and safer routes? The beach and shoreline area and downtown are by far the highest. But schools are over 1 in 3. Public transit and North Madison are both 1 in 4. So this is our best indicator of where people would like to see improvement. Question seven is, how often do you walk, bike a week? This is again a question about usage. And it's again impressive numbers, over 80% walk or bike 2 or more days a week. This was primarily taken in summer months. June, July, and August were both of our responses. And that's obviously peak time. But we have high usage. And then flipping over, question six, are there places you would like to bike, walk to, but choose not to? 64% said yes, which is, given the high numbers for biking and walking in the prior questions and the 97% who wanted safer accommodations, that might be seen as low. It may be an indicator that if you build it, they will come. And if you don't, they are still going to go. Question six, A was an opportunity to comment if they did say yes. 86% responded. That's 55% of the total responders. And looking through those comments, what, what was uniform about the reasons were safety. Between the cars and the roads, people don't feel that it's safe enough to bike or walk. The roads and areas mentioned primarily were the major arteries, 79, Route 1, the Hemenasut Connector. And areas were downtown, the schools, North Madison, and the roads to the shoreline. Then flipping over to question eight, and see who took our survey, 90% live in Madison. It's not surprising, people who did not are from local area towns. It was summer, so I'm not sure if we always get 10%. But this was at Stop &amp; Shop, farmers markets, the Concerts on the Green. We get a fair number of, speaks to our economic vitality that people are visiting. And we'll get to question nine. But question 10, would you like to receive more information? 55% said yes. So we have 323 email addresses that we can use to even touch with people, which we did in September or early October, letting them know about the scarecrows if they like to vote and giving them an update, as Jenny did, about what we've been doing and what's going on coming. As far as ages, as Jenny referred to, we're short in the younger group of kids through school age. That's, I think we're closer to 25% of our kids. Our population is young, at school age. That may have changed. I know this population has dropped. But according to the last census, we're low. And we made a big effort to reach out to seniors. We ran the senior center newsletter and left a lot of our brochures there that were picked up. So we're trying to get a broad cross-section. Question nine... Question nine was the ability to just leave a comment. And Kathy Bosco, one of our committee members, did the mammoth job of trying to tally and categorize that. She couldn't be used to it. What I got reading, so you can see the different areas that people talked about. What I got, I read through them all too, they write books, people are very interested in the main response that we got in person and from the survey, it's just overwhelmingly positive. People were so enthusiastic and interested, and said, thank you for doing this, thank you for creating a committee, and the town will be so much better with this. So it's a very positive thing, it's very fun to be on.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
I've got one here that says, one-way envy.
That's nearly true.
What's SGT?
Sure. I'll call.
Just to be, I just want to make sure I understand the process. The next step is you will be refining an overall plan? That's what you will be bringing back to us?
And that, yeah. And what we're trying to do is connect, especially connect things like schools and parks and downtown and, you know, the library, places that people really want to get to.
So how are you separating out the respondents on their, based on their activities? So if somebody identifies as a pedestrian primarily, but then answers the biking questions as well?
No, I think we have a lot of votes, bike, cab, walk. We didn't, we didn't ask people to identify one way or the other.
Are you, do you see that coming? So you've got, let me see, we've got pedestrians, right? We've got joggers, we've got enthusiast bicycling, right? The people on expensive bicycles. And then we've got sort of the casual, right? So we've got really four big user groups, and they don't look or behave the same in, on the road, right? I mean, you've got bicycles on the top end that could be doing 20 to 25 miles an hour, they look an awful lot like a vehicle. And then, and then you've got a walker. And those two groups in close proximity doesn't seem like a good, especially a bike doesn't make very much noise, doesn't seem like a good match. Are you going to try and separate out the different use classes as you consider how you're going to propose getting people around?
I think it was raised whether, when we're doing the math and prioritizing, we could have recreational routes, and we could have commuting routes, like people who want to come North Madison, who want to get downtown, want to go down 79, which surprised me, because as a recreational biker, I'd rather go Summer Hill or Oak Hill. So we have, what we have now from John is a very good inventory of what the voters currently have. We have a survey to guide, this is, it's an initial survey, we may do more in-depth as we can go, but it gives us a way forward. We're just starting to look at the map.
And you use the word trails in here. Are those sort of trails that cut between streets as an alternative route for a bicycle to take, or is it a trail in the woods somewhere that simply exists to enjoy the woods?
They have a lot of trails in Madison that do go between our streets. So especially like relating to the school, there are a lot of ways that you can use the trails in addition to the roads. It's an open question.
Okay, okay, so yeah, that was fine. And right, and there's a lot of communities that actually use that strategy to move non-motorized traffic around, right?
Well, we have, Jason Engelberg's on our committee too, I'm sure you all know him, he teaches at Bicycle. And he's organizing the group of students to improve what is an informal trail that sort of connects the two schools back there in Dower Park, and to make that a more travelable, more formal kind of a.
That actually started this past weekend.
Nice, yeah, very cool, cool. And lastly, are you considering battery-powered bicycles in, as a potential use group, right? The sales and the use of these battery-assisted bicycles is taking off and represents yet another type of, of traffic.
And a potential need for regulation from what I've read. These are good questions, but it's initial.
We need the traffic engineers.
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Anyone who uses the road is really, these questions.
Wheelchairs.
We want a handicap fee.
Accessible to all.
Yeah.
But there have been articles about motorized bicycles. It's a question, how do you handle that? Do you allow it, where do you allow it, how do you allow it?
It'll be great to get your feedback. As, so one more thing, sorry. As a, as a parent of three children, and I, you know, certainly I live in a neighborhood of a lot of kids, I got to think that safety of just kid, you know, I hear all the time of, I live in North Madison, so kids bicycling from North Madison down 79 all the way downtown, I have to think that's a concern at this point. I mean, it's a concern for me as a parent. So is that something that you guys are thinking about a lot? Safety in general?
Coming up next year, that was big on the comments. That's where we heard a lot about requesting that.
Great, thanks very much. Number eight, strategic plan update. Lauren?
So the community input sessions are being held tomorrow. There is one at 4:00 and one at 6:30. They're both in the Hemenastic Room.
Over here.
Which is right across the way here at town campus. We had to move.
I'm doing it for the camera, should you see that?
We had to move the initial first community input session that was scheduled for the 15th because of the snow and ice that we received that evening, which is why we're holding an afternoon session tomorrow. Depending on the outcome of tomorrow's two sessions, we may have the consultants come back out for a third in-person community input session, but that'll really depend on what we consider as the need for that after tomorrow's two sessions. In addition, after tomorrow, I will be sending out an email notification with an online survey that will contain all of the questions that will be part of the community input sessions to be held tomorrow as well. After the community input sessions, the consultants will take all of that information and analyze it into a draft document, which will be presented to the elected boards and town staff on December 12th and 13th.
Great. Do we have a sense of what the expense of a, of an extra date is?
Travel.
Yeah, it's basically travel. So it's what, you know, flights, hotel. I think right now they have it quoted at 650 per trip. So we still have to pay for the first time they came out because they were here. We didn't anticipate the weather being as bad as it, as it was. Originally was not, you know, the weather forecast was originally not as, as bad. So they were actually here from Ohio and just stayed at the airport overnight and flew back the next morning.
Lauren, any information sessions tomorrow, does the selectman have any role to play?
No. Anyone is invited to attend. Any, any of the elected members or the other town stakeholders are invited to attend, just to get firsthand knowledge of what the residents feel should be incorporated into the plan. But in general, how the input sessions will run is the consultant has me setting up nine tables in Hemenastic Room, and each table will have a poster that has one question on it. And so for instance, one of the questions is, what one word do you think describes the vision of Madison? And you can answer as many times as you'd like with what one word is important for the vision of Madison. So it's really more of a chance for the public to come out and be heard than it is really a facilitation by anyone.
So we can participate like anybody else would? I'm going to be at the first one. Won't be at the second one because we have a playoff game tomorrow night.
Nice.
So you guys can spell me there if you want to.
It is my wife's birthday tomorrow, so I am spelling as well, so hopefully you guys can spell Tomlin.
I'm going to be in Florida.
So I do have a follow-up question though. So I can't remember how long it's been, so a month, month and a half, since we did our initial interviews. Has there been any summary or any, something coming back from the consultants to suggest?
I think we're just.
No.
Not yet.
So the whole point of the 12th and 13th, those workshops that they're coming back out for, is to give everyone a report of, this is what we learned in our one-on-one interviews, this is what we learned through the community input, through the sessions and the online survey. And now with these two things in mind, this is the draft plan that we're presenting.
And at that point, we're going to want to try to pick up on anything we think we missed in the first go-round.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, really helpful, thanks.
I think it's probably wise of us to start thinking about an extra day, simply, if for no other reason than the person who's out of town on the one day doesn't have.
Like she, just saying, Floris.
So we might start considering dates that we pull the trigger on fairly quickly.
Okay, I agree. I think that's, you know, I didn't like the optics of doing them both in one day, and I mean, Lauren explained exactly how it happened, so, you know.
Oh, yeah, 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 the weather is what it is, and I mean, if we do, again in December, where.
We could fly them back for another day and have the same thing happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd see how many people actually show up and.
I think that's right, I agree.
I wouldn't know how to gauge how many people are actually going to show up.
I think the process is just as important as the outcome, so making sure that we're, we're good to the process.
Okay. Number nine, discuss academy school update and polling process.
You had a pretty good update.
Well, I was going to say.
I haven't been called.
I've called them several times.
Who's giving the update, is that? Is that you?
Catherine gave it.
Oh, I stole your thunder.
We're going to record you on this one.
Somebody's been called though.
I went to both of the sessions, and the evening session, surprisingly, was not quite as well-attended as the afternoon session. For those of you that were at the afternoon, the evening questions were very, very similar. I think the interests were very similarly represented. Certainly, we had a few of the same people who commented. And clearly, we've got people advocating for their particular position. And we see that advocacy taken on a lot of different forms, right? We see a lot of different perspectives represented, so I think you're getting the word out. We're getting a lot of diversity of opinion, certainly diversity that we weren't getting the first time around.
I just got a text from somebody who just got a call from Gray Blue.
Yeah, Dick got a call.
Yeah.
I got a call.
You're disqualified.
It was a captured call.
Yeah, it went well. The girl doing it was, you know, very methodical. The girl doing it was very methodical, and it didn't take that long. The emphasis was on the different options. I thought there was going to be a question at the end that either to keep it or sell it, that question wasn't there. So it's obvious, it's going to be mainly a matter of who votes for which option. There were a few other questions like, how old are you, which was embarrassing? And a few miscellaneous questions like that, but the bulk of it, very short, was each of the items, and they did them in detail. So a person who wasn't familiar with it would know what each of the options was, what the dollar numbers were, and so on.
That's great.
I would say it should go pretty well.
Good.
Good. And it's probably worth saying again, and you guys have been saying it very consistently, that the, the science behind the poll is rooted in the demographic makeup of Madison, right? And, and one of the big demographic indicators is age. And what they want to be careful of is that they don't skew the polling results towards any one demographic. So at the end, the respondents to the poll look like a cross-section of the town. And therein lies the foundation of the science that then happens from, from the analysis of the numbers, so.
Now, the faceboard you, that means that I'm going to call me?
They're close to us.
Demographic.
All I can tell you is when I told them my age, she seemed to be very happy. She didn't get very many of them at that age.
Was it a landline?
Yes, it was a landline.
Well, I think the coverage has been great. I mean, I think the source has covered, I mean, the whole last week's paper gave a very good summary of the whole process and.
Did anybody read it?
Yes.
Come on, Gus. Take it easy.
She's still here.
And there's a link. If Zoe's not going to do it, I'm going to find her. There's a link.
They've shared you.
I've been dealing with the public for.
You can get, you can get 100 articles.
I was a question, is anybody reading in the source?
He was just being.
My wife read it from beginning to end, and I heard lady friends all read it from the beginning to the end. Oh, that was a joke?
Yeah. We're not sure.
You never know.
Asking the selectman, what did you think of the PowerPoint presentation? Was it clear?
I thought it did a great job. I thought, I thought you guys did a great job of explaining the material, a little background context on the history. And I think the types of questions you were getting back really reflected that, right? Because they were, they were really getting to the heart of, of what are we going to be doing with this property? And we didn't have a lot of questions about, does the will prevent us from, from even doing this, right? So I think we're, we're past some of that early acknowledgement phase that we had, you know, a year ago.
And it was pretty clear from the group, especially at the earlier session of the senior center. These were informed folks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think another reason the presentation went so well is I think the folks in the room perceived that they were getting objective information. You folks were credible, that you'd done your homework, and that you weren't trying to twist any arms or sell any particular point of view. And I think, you know, folks appreciate that honesty in the committee's work.
Thank you.
Don't be nice to her, she's going to expect it from everybody.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, number 10, appointments. Andrea Aaron to the Youth and Family Services Board for a term to expire January 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, tax abatements to refund the $4,945.72.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Citizen comments? Are you not? Your 15 liaison reports selectman comments?
We went to the library opening, but I think the camp already commented on that, so that was fantastic. Ribbon putting at the library. Company of North Madison.
The CIP committee is meeting regularly and making great progress. We are, we've now matured as a committee into the place where we're not revisiting every single project that, that we've formally approved or, or previously started. So we're making pretty quick work of the easy stuff. I think our next big topic is going to be the CNRE, the Capital Long Recurring Expense Line. It is the biggest capital budget line item, and I expect we'll spend several weeks on that, but as I can tell, we're on or ahead of schedule.
No, we're doing great.
Doing it with fewer meetings.
Yes, very well-run.
So it's all good here.
The pension committee has regularly quarterly meeting. We did receive a early draft of the actuarial report, which will be presented to us a little later in the budget cycle. Fortunately, there are no big surprises in it, as far as I can tell. And in terms of our investment portfolio, I think the two key things, the town is making the contributions.
the contributions as specified by the actuary in full, and the long-term expected rate of return on the portfolio, that is, the performance of the portfolio is within the actuary's guidance numbers. So although we've had a rocky last quarter, we're still long-term right where we need to be.
I guess the last two groups that I, were canceled, but I will report on the Tribe for Working Committee, and that continued to meet weekly, and this Thursday evening is the first public information session, which is going to be up at Ryerson, seven o'clock. And this one is sort of aimed at, obviously, at parents, there also will be information sessions designed to meet the seniors, also business people, so we're trying to hit, more than likely, there won't be more than one meeting with the parents, but this is the first one. Trying to get in as many, it's a tough time of year, but trying to get in as many as we can before the end of the year, and then starting in January, so that we'll have a good idea of where people's heads are at, so.
If I could just jump on that, the, these information sessions, public will not be asked to comment on proposed options for future use of the school buildings, but rather, we're first trying to get a sense from the public about the priority of values. What's important if we design facilities and the location of those facilities, what is important to this community? And so we're taking a giant step backwards to make sure that before we start coming up with various kinds of proposals for the public about where the schools are and which schools get attention and what grades are located where, the public will first be asked to share their sense of values about what is proper here, and I think that's what may make these sessions especially interesting.
Great, good, Rob.
I have one other, if you don't mind. So I attended on 11/19, the Library Board of Trustees meeting, and just a couple of updates there, there were ten applicants for the head librarian job, so they're in the process of interviewing right now, and they're down to two finalists applicants, and they are very encouraged on those two applicants, very strong candidates. And obviously Laura Downs has been doing just an incredible job in facilitating Move, getting the library to North Madison, which has now been open for two weeks, and just kind of keeping everything moving in the right direction. So the board was incredibly appreciative of Laura and her staff for the incredible work, and frankly, all the volunteers that helped with Move as well. People really rolled up their sleeves and helped, which was fantastic. There was a, I'm not gonna give the number on camera here, but an estate donor of a sizable amount that was given to the Library Board of Trustees with respect to the library, so that was fantastic, and so they were excited about that. They did also receive from the Friends at the Library an additional $15,000, so an increase, I think that brings the total to somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $35,000 for the year.
Is that money towards our operation or money towards the capital?
Capital, I believe. And then relative to the building committee, there were eight bids, I think at the Board of Finance meeting, many of us were already there when Graham talked about this, but eight bids, they selected and picked Enterprise Building from Newington, and he was considerably, they were considerably under the budget, so that is also very, very encouraging. Couple of fundraisers to throw out there, December seventh and eighth, there was a book sale, December sixteenth is a fundraiser with the Chang Sisters, and then February ninth is Love Your Library fundraiser, Buy a Brick.
Any feel as to how many, the traffic up there?
So it's on my street, so I do see a fair amount of traffic on my road already, and we went and met Santa and bought our Christmas trees, and there was quite a few people visiting the library at the same time, so it looks like it's well-attended so far. I mean, many of us were at the opening, and there was quite a crew, there was even several families in the library while we were doing the ribbon cutting, so it was pretty nice to see. I mean, they're at fifteen percent of their total collection, so, you know, it is what it is, but, you know, operations are moving as normal right now.
Anybody got anything else? Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?